Thank you. Okay. And so today we'll be hearing from Wayland X Coleman, Makia Green, and Pun Yu. And each of them will offer some tips about abolitionist organizing, share about their own experiences working for abolition, both inside and outside of the criminal system. So I'll give each speaker a chance to intro themselves and talk for a few minutes and then we'll open it up for Q and A at the end. So drop your questions in the chat whenever they come up and we will gather them. So we're going to start with Wayland and Wayland, I will pass it to you.
Okay. So my name is Wayland Coleman. I'm also called X. I am incarcerated in Massachusetts. I'm an incarcerated abolitionist. I'm also a representative of the Deepwater Coalition in Massachusetts. And I work in conjunction with several other abolitionist orgs, you know, throughout the United States. And so first I want to say that I'm always honored for the opportunity to speak to you all and to share some of my perspectives. Abolition, though a popular conversation, is not always a welcome conversation. Even by poor disenfranchised people who have been affected from the accomplishment of our goals. We know why the beneficiaries of the capitalist model would refuse to welcome the conversation. It's ways that our society is structured. Poor disenfranchised people who don't benefit from the capitalist social political structure reject abolitionist ideas perhaps because they don't understand our context enough to be able to imagine a world free of white supremacy. Or perhaps many, especially blacks, are afraid to piss off white people. I have many discussions about PIC abolition and that's what Christine has asked me to speak to you about today. I do find myself adjusting the way that I present an idea to a particular audience. Audiences differ in age, race, gender, social status, academic background, et cetera. So these variations often warrant a need for a different approach. For example, my conversations about prison abolition with people who are incarcerated are very different from my conversations with people outside of the prisons. And even inside of the prison, there are differences in ages, race, gender, social status, academic background, et cetera. The discussions are actually tougher with people who are inside of the prisons. What I find interesting is that most people who are caged in the prisons actually have a stronger belief in the needs for prisons compared to many of the people who I converse with in our free society. Even though the abolition of prisons would mean their freedoms. Race-wise, I find it equally difficult.
Christine, can you hear?
Oh, no, we cannot. Oh.
Hold on one second.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Can you talk a little bit? Go ahead, Wayland.
Okay. So as I was saying, in regards to races, inside of the prison, race-wise, I find it equally difficult to talk about abolition in prison, both for very different reasons. Incarcerated whites are usually reluctant to deal with anybody who's not white. You have to keep in mind that prisons are very divided environments. We're divided in every way you can imagine, from race to the type of case you're in for, who you're hanging around, where you're from. We're divided in every way, so we are very divided environments. So the fact that whites don't like to deal with anybody other than white doesn't apply to all incarcerated whites, but it is a majority. Many whites that I've had abolitionist discussions with are often offended at the idea that their power structure should be removed. It's understandable considering it's a system that provides them some consideration of worth. I've not met an incarcerated white person yet that agrees that the PIC should be completely abolished, though I have met many who believe that it should be reformed. So incarcerated whites have not agreed with me about the abolition of white power structures and suggesting that white people's control of people's lives should no longer exist and become heated. Some of the conversations have been intelligent. Incarcerated blacks are another story. My personal abolitionist platform is based on the honest representation of how I take in information or interpret and experience the world around me. Incarcerated, the incarcerated black mind is a very ignorant mind. However, though, a more open mind. Incarcerated blacks' openness to the idea of prison abolition are largely age-based. For example, older blacks, like my father's age, have been on the front lines of prison struggle and are more likely believers in this demise. They often happen to see someone like me or my age taking the reins, and it's often very easy to have abolitionist discussions with them. Older incarcerated blacks will give you literature and stories about their struggle, and that often proves valuable in my own abolitionist education. Incarcerated blacks my age are more reform-minded and are likely to view me as a radical. They often don't want to upset white people, but they do want things to change. Our incarcerated black youth, on the other hand, perhaps our thirty and under generation, are the absolute toughest crowd, and there are a couple of reasons for this. One is that when we're young and we get caught up in the system, we enter these cages with a strict mentality or an "I don't give a fuck" attitude. And we're all adults, right? So we're here to learn and not censor ourselves, right? So many of our incarcerated youth are not educated and have often left schools for games at a very young age. Often with the youth, I'll break down how the capitalist structure has a design or a strategy manufactured into it that makes sure we grow up poor and end up in prison. They'll attempt to give them, I'll attempt to get them to imagine black communities without police and then a whole society without policing prisons, and that's where we get a lot of the fireworks. And mindful, the black youth are kind of my target crowd for these discussions. So I want to give you a couple of examples of what this conversation sounds like when you bring this up to our youth. I'll present the idea that we should build black communities without the need for policing. Our youth would respond, "Get rid of police? How you gonna get rid of the police?" "Nigga, if you get rid of the police, I'm bodying everybody." "I'll kill all them niggas out there." Right? That's usually the conversation. So I often respond with, "Why? If there's no police to police our communities, why is it that the only thing we can think about is killing someone? Right? To get a gun and to shoot somebody." Their response is usually, "Listen, I got smoke." Right? "I'm killing all my smoke. If I can't come to prison, if I don't come to prison for killing my smoke, I'm killing everybody out there." Right? So this is the mentality that we have to deal with when we're discussing, you know, that we don't need policing. And so what I would do is I would go extreme in this type of conversation. And this is what I mean by I have to adjust the way that I present this material. And I'll go to the extreme. So I'll say, "Okay, fine. Let's say you kill everybody in your community." Right? Everybody in your neighborhood, all the black teenagers, because that's your target, right? There's no more niggas out there, right? The black teenagers that you're referring to. They're all dead. They're all gone. Then what? Right? Let's say there's two hundred people that live in your community and you kill all two hundred of them, since there's nothing else you can do but shoot somebody. So let's say you kill everybody in the community. Then what? Why don't you just live your life without the need for killing? Why do you feel there's the need to kill? And they'll look at the extreme example and they'll say things like, "Oh, nah, it's not like that. I'm just saying I got smoke. I would have to end up my smoke because then they would kill me." Right? And it's often these type of, you know, obstacles in our mentalities that we have to figure out ways to overcome. And the fact that a lot of our youth that's incarcerated today are involved in a lot of gang activity and has committed a lot of harm in our communities is true. And so when you have the youth coming into the prison system, the first thing they do when another black person walks through the door, the first thing they do is to look at the person and say, "Is that somebody I might have beef with?" Right? And it's because of the harm that they've caused. And so it's true that there's this fear that somebody wants to kill them because they've done something to somebody. And so I listen to what they say to me. I don't just reject them because of what they're saying. I'll listen to what they say to me and I'll take that back and figure out a way to kind of like penetrate, you know, that mentality of ignorance. After these conversations with me, they usually come back. They are hungry because remember, they are very deprived minds academically, academically, right? And they do want education. They do want food for their minds. But it's a matter of how do we figure out a way to get it to them? And so that audience, the youth, has presented the biggest struggle in talking about prison abolition, and that's used attitude. So I don't want to take up too much time. I know I've taken up quite a bit. And so I did want to just give you those examples of some of the things that I encounter when I do talk about abolition from inside of the prison. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayland. Appreciate those insights. Makia, I'm going to pass it to you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Makia. I use they/them pronouns. And I am calling in from Washington DC on Piscataway land. I am going to share my screen so that I can share some slides with you. Okay. Let's see. Can folks see my screen okay?
Yes.
All right. Let me know if it needs to be a little bigger or anything. All right, y'all. So my name is Makia. I'm in DC. And this, folks are up here. This are some of my members and leads. I co-founded and lead an organization called Harriet's Wilder's Dreams, and this is an event from our Court Watch program. I began organizing myself in 2014. I was politicized after, during the Ferguson uprising in the murder of Mike Brown. And ever since then, I started protesting. I started volunteering with different organizations leading up until, leading up to 2021 where, okay, I think it was 2021 where I founded Harriet's Wilder's Dreams, a black-led abolitionist community defense hub where we center all lives, most, all black lives most at risk for state sanctioned violence in the greater Washington area. Harriet's Wilder's Dreams, we do, we came together because we realized that the way to freedom, there was not only one singular way. And so we do the political organizing, we do mutual aid, we also do court support and participatory defense with our community. And these are some pictures from some of my events and some of my comrades. So one thing is that in this work, when we are organizing for abolition of prisons, police in the entire complex, we're often caught up with, you know, how do we talk to our families? I really, really appreciate the last speaker talking about how to talk to folks on the inside. And honestly, a lot of the conversations that I end up having tend to be very similar, right? A lot of folks have questions about, you know, pushback around police. Some of it comes from what they see in the media. Some of it comes from our genuine personal feelings. But I'd love to walk y'all through some examples and have a little conversation. So as we know, in the summer of 2020, riding on a decade of work, I, leaders and activists, defund the police became a catalyzing platform for police accountability nationwide. I, and at the same time in my life, I was, I was in the middle, right? Not that I was in the middle of abolition, but I was in the middle between a, my movement having this whirlwind, right? Where we're literally painting "defund the police" in the streets and my family experiencing great loss by losing one of my first cousins to gun violence. And it was at a time where I had to really figure out how, this is the time I need to engage my family on abolition, right? And I have these masks to say "defund the police" and all of these things. And at the same time, we are in deep mourning, right? And a lot of the things of the families that I talked to in DC, you know, my cousins were, they want to work with the police. We, you know, want to quote-unquote "find his killer," all of these things. And I, I just was in a deep conflict mode, right? And at the end of the day, one of the biggest things that I, I said to my family was that at the end of the day, I want Rashad back. And I know that engaging with the police is not going to bring him back and it's not going to undo the trauma that we've experienced by losing so many men in our family to gun violence. And that at least my role in my family really needed to be, how can I help heal that, right? Like, how can we have more conversations with all of, I have about five to six cousins who've all lost their oldest son? And how can we have conversations about healing? Where oftentimes we just move forward. We just go to the next thing. So I also have been in a place of learning, how do I talk to my family about abolition to support my family and to support all the other activists that are in this movement with me? One thing is important is that local spokespeople, folks who are like, "I'm a, I want to do this abolitionist work," right? We need to be able to connect with our audience in our hometowns and our cities and our families. And we have to center some shared values and clearly explain what it means to defund the police or abolish the police in a place where we live. And we have to inspire our people to imagine what alternatives to violent policing can really look like. Like when I, like when I mentioned, the thing that connected me to my family was naming that we want to heal, right? We don't want to be in pain, and that's a shared value that we have. And from there, that is where I continued our conversation to focus on the things that we have in common versus the things that we don't have in common. Like, for example, my family is very pro-military, not because of patriotism, but because the military provides opportunities for our family members for, for jobs and schooling and has for decades. And so it's, I have to focus again on what our shared values are, right? Wanting to keep our family safe, wanting folks to get out of poverty. But I'm curious for y'all, how comfortable are you to talk to your family about abolition? Feel free to like, do the like raise your hand thing. Come off me if you can. If you had like a one to 10, let's see, I'm going to look at the chat here. Um, varies a person to person. My family, I've tried, but I've been shut down. I could talk to some folks in my family easily, but not to others. Does anybody want to share why it might be difficult? We get stuck on the practicality. Only my mom's side, those in the US are all fairly left-wing and have been able to speak with them about it openly. That's dope. Yeah. All the, these experiences and I'm seeing strong military background and they get it when I talk about abolition, love to hear it. It's, I think that many of our families could be having similar experiences, right? Because even though abolition and the moment of 2020, it became a very popular conversation, we know that majority of black Americans, like most Americans, do support funding for local police departments, right? But there's more reasoning why, right? Black Americans are often stuck between a lack of alternatives and a rise in rural and urban crime. When you think about the, what is the main issue for black Americans, it is crime, right? It is the, the vigils that we experience. It is, these are the things that our folks are talking about and they're searching, right? And being an abolitionist isn't me, it's important for me to not ignore that, right? And to honor that and lead my conversation through that. And it's also important to know how the play that the media is having on our families, right? We are in a world right now that feels incredibly unsafe. When we think about the mass shootings that have happened, the list is, goes, goes on for each city that has been impacted by that. That, that adds to the feeling of unsafe. And whether your family is coming from a place of where you experience violence on a daily or your family has experienced the fear of violence and maybe not on a daily basis has to deal with that kind of violence, our folks are being told to be afraid and are being pointed at our most marginalized communities. The thing is that people understand that the police are not solving things. They recognize and are frustrated with the police and frustrated with the system. They know that it's not solving what's happening. And we're really struggling to push forward to have these conversations about alternatives. Just other pictures of my chosen family. Some things that we try to do in like the Movement for Black Lives, so for black people, we often talk, we try and connect. You know, for much of the US history, law enforcement meant implementing laws that were designed to subjugate black people. That's why we are pushing for safety that works for everyone and not just some of us, right? When I'm talking to black folks, I try to connect with something they know about, right? We know that the current US has not, was not formed for us, and so I might leave from that. If I'm talking to someone who maybe doesn't experience violence in the same way, I'm, I talk about how we know the safest communities in America are places that don't center the police. Or I say, you know, the safest community in, in America probably have less police. And it's a difference in the way that I try and form my statement to connect to folks. At the end of the day, you want to explain what abolition means where you live, right? You want to explain how it can look different in different cities, and it really requires engagement from us. And we have to be clear that police don't keep us safe when we're talking about it. So I might talk about, instead of spending time talking about the police in my, like hometown, I might spend more time talking about what are the things that we can do, right? Is there, there's no healing circle for moms who have lost people, right? And so my cousin and I started talking about that and I've been supporting her to create a, a group of folks who are just like her, right? So she can have that kind of support so that, because at the end of the day, if I don't have the conversation with my cousin who's lost her son to gun violence, someone else will, right? Someone else is going to have a conversation with her and she is going to be moved into another camp in the abolitionist conversation. When I want to give examples and you want to keep talking. And this is also another point of telling stories and recording them. I, before my grandmother passed this summer, I talked to her a lot about, you know, what did you do without police? Because she grew up in rural South Carolina, and although there was a lot of police, a lot of times she was very cut off from the rest of everything else. And so a lot of things they did, they had to do without the system's involvement. And they had practices. And so talking to her and recording the things that she's done, talking to my family and recording those things so that we don't forget it. I may not be a person who's going to write a book, but it is important that I can pass those things down to my family. Oh, thanks, Christine. And at the end of the day, this is our opportunity. Y'all have been in this program. Y'all have a lot of the, a lot of the, all the lessons and have connected to some amazing speakers and movement leaders. And this is really our opportunity and honestly, our responsibility to stimulate people's imaginations and help them envision what they may not yet be able to see, right? The worst thing that can happen is someone to tell you no, right? And it's a real power in being persistent and being in the community. Especially for DC. I'm curious about your, your places. DC is all about showing up for each other. Everybody has their own LLC or nonprofit. I mean, I mean anyone. Everyone has their own thing that they're doing. And the way that people build trust is by going to someone's event, going to someone's party and being, you know, not a transplant that's just coming in and out. And even though that could see, that doesn't automatically seem like a part of my abolitionist fight, having, being up in, in people's faces is a way that I know they're going to build trust. And when it, when the moment comes, they might trust me when I say, "Don't call the police." Here are some other pictures. You can find this imagery and other, I would say like brochures on how to talk about abolition through different lenses at defundmpd.org. And here's some information about my organization.
Amazing. Thank you, Makia. Yeah, I'm just like remembering your closing to the cohort in the spring. And then now this one, I just feel like my mind is blown every time I hear you talk, so thank you. It's good to have those tips in mind. Okay, so the last person we're going to hear from is Pun Yu, who is in Cambodia, where it is 3:30 AM right now. And so we have a video recording from him. Amber, if you can run that.
Yep. So the first one will be 30 seconds and it's just him introducing himself. And then I'll play a five-minute clip that goes into his description and experience with restorative justice and being transferred dice upon his release from state prison.
By introducing myself, first of all, you know, I mean, my name is Pun Yu and I'm 48 years old. And currently, I've just been deported to Cambodia, a country that I don't know, after serving 26 years of incarceration. And yeah, that's just my humble beginnings so far. And like I said, I was born in Cambodia. Life was good apparently until war happened.
And let me pull up the second one where he goes into some of his work.
And one of the main self-help programs is called BOG, Victims Offender Education Group. That's a restorative justice program. I started that program and man, it, it really, really goes deep. It asked me to go all the way back to my childhood trauma and try to help me understand how does childhood trauma causes me to think and behave a certain way? And eventually how that way I think and behave led to my offense. So understanding the wounds from the past and how that led to my crime, how that crime led to How that crime led to, um, impacts on other people? And what I intend to do after I've learned, um, about myself moving forward? And they also have a component in that program that they brought survivors of crime that we talked to. You know what I mean? I mean, there were surrogate survivors, but it was also another eye-opening experience for me. Because now I can not only get to tell my story, I get to hear from the other end. And I get to, um, like experience their wound, their pains from their loss. And that gave me a whole different perspective on, again, the pain that I caused my victims' family. So when I was able to like talk and understand that, um, like, like the possible almost endless, endless, um, wounds that, that could be everlasting. Like I said, man, I, I don't want that kind of, um, like pain that I want to cause to anybody again, you know? So that became my starting point of restorative justice. After completing the Vogue program, I sat through, it was a two-year program. And, um, I continued with the program. I started facilitating, facilitating the program. And just honing up my skills, you know, just helping other men understand the impacts of their crime and what led to it. You know, and, um, helping him work through it and heal through it, you know? And eventually I facilitated, I became the coordinator there. And then I helped, um, volunteers who came, who comes in and I trained them on how to, to facilitate programs like Vogue, what to look for. You know what I mean? And I say this because seeing other people heal, whether it's the men inside through my work, is one of the most rewarding things I've, I've, I've been a part of. You know what I mean? And, um, to allow them to find their own aha moment, a little pivotal moment. I mean, it's priceless. You know, I mean, it, it, seeing that helps me heal myself. It helps me find a new meaning and purpose in my life. Like this, I feel like this is my calling, um, counseling and, and, um, helping people who struggling with their odios and pain and, and, and needs to be healed, you know? So, so when that was, um, so I, I maybe was a part of that program close for, close to like eight to ten years, you know? Yeah, until I went to the board and it was found suitable and it was time to go. I mean, when it was time to go, like, man, I thought about like all the other stuff that, that I, I've done there as well. I mean, I got my A degree. I graduated and put in a lot of work with Vogue. Um, I co-founded a program called Roots. And, um, I was also a domestic violence, um, um, certified. You know what I mean? I mean, this was all something I took based on my personal experience with the loss of my sister. So I, everything that I did, i- i- I kind of like almost took her with me. You know what I mean? And, um, like I said, since I was found suitable for parole, hoping that I'll walk out the door one day and leave the gates. Um, after twenty-five years, they came like two days right before I was ready to walk out the gates and told me, hey, your, your journey is not over yet. You're, we're going to pick you up and you're going to face deportation and you have to go see a judge and see if you're qualified to stay or not, you know? And, um, that was another high and then a low real quick. It was traumatizing, like, you know what I mean? Just to pull at somebody's heartstrings like that. And then to sit in ice, just wait, you know what I mean? Not knowing your outcome. It is brutal. It is brutal because you know that this is how America works. It says, you don't have your, your paperwork, you broke a law, therefore you're deportable.
We have a third video we might play a little bit later, but that, that's that for now. So I'll pass it back to you, Christine.
Thanks Amber. Um, okay, uh, Wayland is between calls right now. Um, so he'll call back in a few minutes. But, uh, let's open it up to Q and As and folks throw some questions in the chat, um, that you have and we'll gather them. Um, I'll throw out a question first to you, Makia, and then to Wayland when he calls back. Um, which is, you know, the folks here are largely people who are in public health. Um, and so what would you like to see the field of public health take on, um, with regards to abolition?
Sure. Um, one thing that I, in, in the field of, of public health, I really would love for us to have a conversation about, you know, in twenty twenty, we, a lot of times we talk about, you know, divest some police, invest in community solutions. And then sometimes you say invest in social workers, right? Like just like the, the social workers, right? But y'all know the intricacies of like the world of public health. And I really feel like as for abolitionist myself, like to be better educated on some more of the intricacies of public health, but also an understanding like what does public health look like without government involvement? Um, because we, a lot of folks are fighting to put money into, you know, our departments of behavioral health and our departments of this. And then at the end of the year, you have a scandal li- a letter that comes out that says they mismanaged millions of dollars. I mean, maybe that's just DC, DC is always in a scandal. Um, but there's so much mishandling of money, there's bureaucracy, things being left. And also a lot of those programs not accessible, inaccessible by our folks, um, by like our, our non-citizens family. And so I think I would love for me as an activist to learn more about, you know, what is public health outside of the government, um, involvement?
Thanks, Makia. Um, Wayland, I asked, uh, you're in between calls and curious your thoughts on this question too. Um, which is what would you like to see, you know, most of the folks here in public health? What would you like to see the field of public health take on with regards to abolition?
That's very interesting. Yeah. That's very interesting. So as far as we got, um, public health goes, I would like to see public health get more involved in the imbalances of poor communities, poor and disenfranchised communities. Um, that causes those communities to be unhealthy. Uh, for example, for example, when you take, um, men out of communities, for example, like, you know, a lot of black communities, a lot of black fathers are being placed in prison. And, you know, when black fathers are placed in prison, the black mother becomes a single mother. And so because our communities are heavily targeted by policing for aggressive, um, incarceration, a lot of our communities, you know, are single parent households. So when those type of imbalances are created in our communities, it does create this unhealthy community. And so it's like, the question is, what is public health? Uh, first of all, and if public health is to make sure communities are healthy so that the societies can be healthy, then you gotta look at the effect of policing or aggressive policing in poor and disenfranchised, um, poor and disenfranchised communities that, you know, keeps those communities unhealthy. Because as long as those communities unhealthy, you know, our teenagers are still coming to prison.
Thank you. Um, Makia, there's a question in the chat for you. Uh, you mentioned that many people struggle to disconnect from the financial benefits for participating in the PSC or military, especially for people who don't have a lot of other options. What are possible counterpoints you might use for that?
Yeah. So, um, one thing that was so, I think recently happened, right? I think the military, um, or military lobbying body was arguing that, you know, canceling student debt or making you college free would decrease their recruitment. Um, and I shared that with my family and it was kind of like this question of like, well, why would they do that? Why wouldn't they want college free? Okay, um, and I, I often talk about that of like, at the end of the day, um, you know, they are selling us on a dream, right? They're selling us on a dream that of like, we can get out of this. But, um, when you think about the support that veterans get, you know, there's this idea that America really supports veterans. And I often talk about how many folks are, are left, um, you know, with different disabilities and they're not supported and they don't get the same help. We talk about folks in our family that have experienced that. Um, some other ways are, you know, I talk to folks about how like minimum wage campaigns are abolitionist campaigns. Housing campaigns are abolitionist campaigns. I try to connect like, um, the young people in my family that are trying to decide what to do with their life um, after high school, you know, try and help them find the things that they're really good at or the things that they can create or other solutions, um, that they could help like directly in our community, in our neighborhoods. Um, versus, you know, they, because at the end of the day, they want to help people, right? Like connecting, like you, you want to help people and you want to make your family proud, right? So like, what are the other ways that we can do that together?
Yeah, it's just some things, um, a couple of things that was said. Uh, just back to back to two past people that spoke. It just made me think of, you know, it really made me think of bell hooks, you know, and just like getting straight to it and naming what we're talking about. And it's the supremacist capitalists like imperialist empire that we're talking about, right? When we talk about public health issue and we talk about people, whether it be the men, the women, the theys, the thems that are being ripped from their homes and not allowing them to stay within their communities and take care of their families, that's a public health issue because then it puts the onus on other people in the family to take responsibility for the children and stuff like that. And then when you mentioned the part about, um, you said they did not want to support paying off college because they said it would impact their enrollment rate. And that's where we have to recognize what the goals of the imperialist state is. They would like for us to remain in a place of power. And when I say in a place of power, I mean, the United States, right? A colonized place, right? We stole people and brought them over here to build up the country, right? We, we talk about they're not going to support anything that's not within their interest, which is waging war on underdeveloped coun- uh, countries. Or rather, we should say, um, you know, um, countries that are impacted, for example, like Cuba, impacted by state sanctions that we have and blockades that we had. All of this ties all together as we're talking about our fam who are from other places. The video we watched where somebody who is in a place that they're not even from for real, like they're from that, right? In their lineage, right, of history, but they're not actually from there, but they were incarcerated. And then so ripped from their home and then furthermore ripped from their home and taken somewhere else. So for me, all of that ties into public health. As somebody said earlier, just trying to get more clear about what public health is outside of the powers that be. Like they don't get to define what public health is. As the other person named, public health situation is people being pulled from the homes and how that impacts us. Yada, yada. Thank you very much.
But you just said, you know, Makia and Wayland, that you both did also of like what, what is public health and, um, thank you. Um, any other questions popping up for people? You come up next or? And we're doing that last video from one and then we can.
Yep. Give me one second. I also see Steph, you have your hand up if you wanted to say something while I'm pulling the video up.
I had a question for Makia because they were giving me all the energy and I was super excited. So I know this work is very relational, but also we're moving around the country more than we used to. Like there are times when I'm in DC, like how do I like connect with the group and say like, what are y'all doing this week? Like, how could I get in? Like, I know I'm not part of the group, but if my body is like proximal to you all, like how do you, how do you get involved and like, what are ways that people can, um, engage in the work? And not have it feel transactional, but like be important?
Yeah, so locally in DC, here it's Wilder's Dreams. Um, it's like I, you can follow us on Instagram. We have people who do not live in DC who are on our mailing list. Um, we have folks who are in other countries, um, that still really like to get information from us. Um, and so you can always plug in specifically with us that way. But also nationally, there are many of the networks of like, uh, Movement for Black Lives, um, Critical Resistance, um, that are putting out information, toolkits, books. Um, there is, I can say M four BL, I'm not sure if it's M four, it might be M four BL dot org, um, which is a national network. Um, and then I'm thinking of the Study and Struggle, which is like a book club, um, that Paris folks with, uh, folks are on the inside who are also doing the book club. Um, but I think the main thing is to be active. Um, and to, as like a small, this, I, I was a theater kid growing up and I, uh, went to this play that was like, actually, uh, like it was kind of about John Brown. And the point is that there's this scene in the play where John Brown and Harriet Tubman are having this like fake conversations. Conversation didn't really happen, but you know, John Brown's like, I'm, I'm great, I'm doing, I'm, I'm, I'm freeing people. I'm, I'm, I'm for the revolution, right? And Harriet Tubman's like, how many, how many black people have you freed? Like, how many people have you gotten out of slavery? And John was like, I, I don't know. And she's like, if you had freed anyone, you would know. You would know the number. Um, and I could give my commentary on John Brown another time, but the fact is like to feel a part of the movement, um, to be connected to folks, being active is just like, uh, you just, you can feel it and you know it. Um, so being active with any of these or in your own organizing at home, um, will be really impactful.
Wayland, were you about to say something?
Yeah, I got my hand up. Well, I, I have a, um, question for Makia as well. Um, and you may not have enough time to, to answer it, but just keep it on your plate. That is, it's a interest that I have about your story. Um, if I understand, you were saying that you suffered harm, um, through gun violence and lost a loved one in your family, right?
Yep, yep.
All right, and, um, and you pretty much decided that working with the police was pointless, right? And so, so there was this thing where it's like, what's the point of incarcerating? You know, when that's not going to solve the problem. And so the question that I have, it's kind of a two-part question. One is like, do you feel that the harm has somehow been repaired in your, in your family situation? Uh, then have you thought about ways that you can use your story and the reasons that you chose not to work with the police? Um, in order to help like craft strategies for dealing with that type of harm? Because, um, gun violence and like death in the family, things like that are different kinds of harm than like domestic violence, right?
Right. Um, that's a great question. And personally, I would say I don't, I don't feel that my family has fully healed, right? Because we're still living, um, we're still living in this state, there's still violence in our community. Um, and I think my, my cousin who's son that was is still healing. However, I have engaged in conversation with folks who have lost folks. I've, I've lost family to gun violence as well as police violence. And one thing I push for is that when a family member is like, unfortunately, you are now a part of this club that no one wants to be in. Um, and I tell them to. And I tell them to fight for reparations, right? So, and have a training that really goes into, you know, reparations is not, is, is actually to repair the harm, right? How are you going to acknowledge the harm that you experienced? What type of financial support do you need? Like, how has this impacted your life? In those ways to get them to focus more on repair than punitive and punishment. And to actually really be more reflective on like, how am I going to live my life now? And what do I need to do that? As well as the piece of reparations that is like to stop the harm, right? Like calling on the city to stop, to actually do something about the harm that we experience in our community. Instead of just putting money into police that is not solving it. So a both and, not a fully healed, however, I do push families to fight for reparations when they've lost their loved one.
Great, Amber, do you want to upload that video? Do sort of a round of last words?
I'm bringing it back to just the world is hurting, the world needs healing. Restorative is about healing yourself, therefore you can heal other people. You know? And. I mean, it's important for me because, I mean, if I could heal one person, maybe that one person has that energy to want to help the next person. And that's one less person that is hurting now. You know, so, so it matters. Even if I can touch one or two lives, that matters to me. You know, and I just hope that, that people understand the importance of, of. Living and practicing restorative in their daily lives, you know? It's important to not carry all that bitterness and anger that, or resentment that you hold against somebody. Because if you hold that in, like it or not, it may show up one day where you didn't expect. And you snapped at somebody and there could become another issue you have to deal with. You know what I mean? And, and that happens all the time, all because you're, you're, you're wounded inside and, and didn't have the tools to take care of it, you know? Restorative starts with you and it ends with helping other people. You know, so, so that's, that's taking it away from the criminal justice restorative to reality store restorative. You know, I mean, for me, like I use restorative like almost all the time in my daily life right now. Even if I don't choose to engage in a, in a conversation with the next person, I choose to really. Set a tone for myself like, hey, you know what I mean? Something's happening right now. This guy is really, really like, like, like. Like checking me out like almost sideways, you know what I mean? And, and I just got a self-check. I mean, you know what I mean? Like I said, restorative starts with you first before you even come and help anybody else. So that's restorative and living it, I guess, you know what I mean? So I hope somehow, some way that, that people can learn from that is, is important. You know, I think people are mostly afraid to jump into restorative conversations because they don't know how. You know, I mean, and, and they're afraid that, that. That by jumping in that conversation, it could end up even worse than it began. You know, so, and there's techniques and tools on, on how to. I don't have to work around difficult conversations like that, you know? And hopefully there's a workshop I can run. I mean, I just did one not too long ago on restorative justice. You know, so. Definitely needed in the world, definitely needed. Yeah.
Amber. All right, if folks do not have more questions, I just want to pass it to Makia and Wayland to see if you have any last words for folks. If not, that's also okay.
Sure.
Go for it.
So. Yeah, so essentially. My thing that I want to say before we all eventually leave is abolition.
You have one minute left.
Abolition is critically important. If you don't believe that the majority of the world should be poor, while the handful should be oversated. Then you have a responsibility to say something about that. You have a responsibility to do something about that. When you look at. The fact that. More people in the world have not, you know, had food or have not have privileges or have not been able to, you know, pursue happiness. And that's the majority of the planet. There's a problem with that. And it's under the model, the model that we live under that that problem is created. And so abolition is important because it gets rid of that problem and it seeks to add violence to the entire world. So I want to say that as like a closing note.
Thank you for using Securus. Goodbye.
Please share my love to Wayland and appreciation. Yeah, I think, I think about a, a, a talk that I went to with Miriam Kaba. And at the end of it, she asked everyone to write down, you know, a moment where we all made a mistake and we were shown grace. Right? When we, you know, we apologize for something and, and someone accepted an apology. And to sit with and like, how did that feel in our bodies, right? And. After going through that, she reminded us that our fight for abolition is because everyone deserves that, right? Everyone deserves the opportunity to feel that kind of relief, to feel that safety, to feel that love. Because we are all capable of, of harming other folks. And in that, you know, we can find a way to build a world where we can all exist. And so I guess that's my biggest thing. I agree abolition is necessary as well as forgiveness, love.
Well, let's, let's come to a close. Yeah, I just very much want to thank you, Makia, for being here again. Sharing your wisdom and. Yeah, just your sort of like gentle, loving. Presence and way of like talking about this as books, I think is really important. So thank you. And Wayland, thank you for being here. Thanks for calling in a whole bunch. And yeah, always just sharing your experience and your knowledge. Yeah. And thank you to who couldn't be here, but for sharing his story and. Yeah, really just at that intersection of like incarceration. Militarism and policing. So I'm grateful to all of our speakers for sharing all their experiences. Thank you to all of you folks who showed up to hear. This is our last political ed session of the fall. We got with the spring cohort. Focused on organizing on campus. So. Please stay in touch. You can email me always here. Or yeah, sign on our site if you've gotten that message. No matter that we had, it'd be five political ed sessions and all of them are available at that website. They'll be available there after we get this one out. Yeah, thanks for just being here and participating. Captainers also for being here, Steph and Amber for running tech stuff and just being amazing in general.